The insurance guy told me what happened to him. He came over and said, "I'm not going back in there." I said, "I wouldn't either." When he sees this, he'll be saying, "Boy, my boy."
Right. The part of this that does from the...
Well, it's a really warm shade, though.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the October 2nd, 2023 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag, and I ask that you please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and eternal.
Libertarian, Justice.
I failed to do this last meeting in September, so I apologize for that. But unfortunately, in our 63-year history of the city of Crest Hill, we lost two Crest Hill police officers who were killed in the line of duty. On October or September 16th, 1967, Officer James Nink was killed while he was in pursuit of an armed robber. It was a vehicle crash, and he was killed instantly. On September 28th, 1994, Sergeant Timothy Simonson stopped a vehicle which contained an armed robbery suspect. He was hiding in the trunk of the vehicle, came out, shot Sergeant Simonson, and he was killed instantly also. So the city of Crest Hill, we never want to forget the impact that they had on the city of Crest Hill. To the Nink family, we certainly want to extend our condolences to his wife Betty Nink Duval, his children, and his grandchildren. And to the Simonson family, we certainly want to extend our condolences to his wife Sue, and his children and grandchildren also. So we want to thank them for their service and their commitment to the city of Crest Hill. We hope that they rest in peace, and I would ask for a moment of silence for you to continue to keep in your prayers their families. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Grace Dullman.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher. Darrell Jefferson. Claudia Giselle.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Cepidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kewell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I would ask for council's concurrence. We do have a special guest in the audience this evening, so I would ask for your concurrence to deviate from the agenda. And I'd like to introduce Mrs. Angela Adolf from Lockport Township High School, District 205. She is the Director of Development and Foundation. She reached out to me this morning and asked if she could approach the podium and speak with the city council this evening. So I would like to introduce Angela Adolf to the podium. Angela, it's all yours.
Thank you. I won't take up too much of your time. I am very proud to be here representing Lockport Township High School, District 205. Our superintendent was able to spend some time with the mayor just last week to talk about Central and all the things we have going on. So I am strictly here to say thank you for all you do for our community. I live in District 205, so I know what it's like to be in community. And we are just here to say we appreciate all you do, the efforts you put forward, the time you put into dedicating to our community. And so I brought a few gifts, some Porter Pride swag, and a ticket to... It says football, but you can go to any game if you would like to go to any game. And I was just going to leave them off to the side, and you guys can fight over sizes. And if you wanted to tell, you can get ahold of me or anyone at the school to, if you need a different size or a different color that suits your fancy. We're just... I'm just here to say thank you. So I appreciate all you guys do for our community, and we're very proud that Lockport High School is in community with Crest Hill. So thank you.
And, you know, we have an excellent relationship with Lockport Township High School also. And I did meet with Superintendent McBride, I think it was about, yeah, 10 days.
Something like a couple of weeks.
In regards to possible improvements to Lockport Central, which is long overdue. But we have had a great relationship for many, many years with both Richland and Chaney-Monji feeding into Lockport Township High School. I know I've been involved with the foundation over the years and everything else, so thanks for everything that you do in helping to promote our next generation. And when I read the newsletter a couple of times a year when it's sent out, I mean, Lockport Township is always in the top. They're academically, athletically, everything, so we should be very proud of all of the students, past, present, and future that will go through those doors at Lockport Township High School.
Well, it takes a village, so we're very proud to be in partnership with you. Thank you for what you do.
I'll open it up to the city council. Any comments?
I would like to say thank you, and I'm glad to hear that the people from there have high academics, because I am a graduate. That is my...
A proud, a proud partner.
And I'm a prime example of what he speaks. But thank you for all you do, because our children are our future.
Well, I have a freshman at Girl in Central, so I'm looking forward to what kind of work is going to be done there. It is a beautiful building, though.
It is a beautiful building. No one wants to touch the beauty of the building. Just maybe to make it so that it's not warm in the hallways and humid in the classroom.
And that's that I get complaints hacked, so, yeah.
It is.
But thank you for all you do, so we're proud to be part of Lockport.
Thank you. So thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. I'm a proud parent of two graduates from Lockport High School, and my youngest is currently a senior.
Oh, okay.
I feel that the level of education that they've received is just top-notch. All the programs that are offered, I just want to thank you very much.
Yeah. I have two boys that went through Lockport, so I'm also proud. Although I didn't myself go, but both my boys have graduated and are off to college. And I'm very proud of what the education they received.
Angela, I'm also a proud alum of Lockport.
Go Porters.
Okay.
But I'm just curious, how I know that there were some tours again tonight of Central? How is that public outreach going, that whole...
Um, I think it depends. We're intrigued about how... I wasn't there, I'm here. The... We're intrigued about a warmer day for the tour versus we've had some cooler days for the tours. We get about anywhere between 20 to sometime... You know, I'd say like sometimes we had 7, sometimes we had 30, so about 20 is our average. I'm just trying to show people, this is your school. You know, what do you want us to do with it?
When I went to high school, I didn't get a chance to have... to be at Central, because it was during the transition of Central to East.
So you were... Yeah.
I did have a class or two at Central, and it's absolutely a beautiful building and hope it can be preserved and...
That is, yes. The plan... So the Board of Education was presented with a plan two weeks ago, and the idea is preservation.
Nice, very good. Thank you.
I do want to tell you one funny story, because when I went there, way before Mr. Albert, the college prep kids in advanced classes all went to Central for a majority of their classes, and then the juniors and seniors were there. So I spent almost all of my three and a half years at Central. I graduated early, so I only went three and a half years. But I do remember I was the... one of the founding members of the Ecology Club that we got started, and we forced the administration to have a class called Know Your Car for the girls, because the girls weren't able to take shop, they said. So I just want you to know, I was ahead of my time back then.
You were.
Way back then.
Trailblazer, back of the thing. I know Lockport used to build a home, and then...
Yes, yes, they did.
That was in the... I learned that recently. That's crazy.
Yeah.
They helped out with a couple of our Habitat for Humanity homes in Crest Hill.
Yeah. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
My son and daughter also went to Lockport, so...
See?
And they enjoyed their time there. And my wife.
There's a longstanding tradition, the building is just about 114 years old with its original wiring, so.
Wow. So we'll end it like this, since you're standing there, I have a confession to make. I graduated from Joliet Catholic High School. But, but my wife is a 1974 graduate of Lockport High School.
There you go.
So there we go.
There you go.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you. You have a great night.
If there's anything you need, reach out. If there's something that we can do in partnership, we are, you know, arms right open. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee, Lee, over there.
That'd be great. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to the agenda items versus the approval of the work session held on September 11th, 2023. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Giselle for the approval of the work session minutes of September 11th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You also have before you the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on September 18th, 2023. Motion would be in order.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Giselle for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on September 18th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to orders.
I have one quick question. I sent you an email today, and I sent Karen as well. I did get a response from Karen.
By understanding her answer to me, that the reason the minister not done, because of the attorney?
No, no, no. We had to go back and correct one set, and then once that, we had the attorney review it.
So...
I can speak to that if you want to.
Go ahead.
So if you recall, there were a couple of changes that were requested for the, I think it's the 25th minutes. One of the changes were from you, Claudia, and then Tina had another request that they be changed. I got sent by Karen the audio from the portion where the mayor talked about which rooms had been soundproofed. I think the minutes are actually accurate. I think the mayor's information was wrong, so I suggested that rather than changing the minutes, that the record be corrected here tonight. And then next meeting, the changes that Claudia requested, which have been made, my understanding. I didn't look at those, but I think those have been made. But the ones that Tina had requested could be then approved with a parenthetical that says that the record was corrected at this meeting. So if you looked at the 25th minutes, which ultimately would be approved, and tonight's minutes, which would have the corrected record, between the two of them, the actual corrections would have been made. Does that make sense?
The minute that I asked you about is the meeting from the 25th, which is last Monday work session. The minutes that you're talking about, it's the 18 here from the meeting, the 18, we do have... We approve those.
Oh, I...
So I'm talking about the...
The one work session?
I'm talking about the work session that was held last Monday.
Oh, then, then I have not been involved in those minutes. I thought you were talking about the ones that I just talked about, so I might be...
Right, those been corrected, Mr. Attorney. I read them today.
Okay.
Those been done?
So then, then I can profess that I had nothing to do with the minutes that you're talking about, so I...
Between the correcting all those minutes, and then she had to get the plan commission done for the work session, so what could be approved tonight for Mr. Reza is on there. And then working the window and all that stuff, she is still in the process of doing those minutes.
Okay.
So they will be on the next one.
I'm just for future, I understand, I don't know what's going on here, why we're not getting the minutes. I understand you stated last meeting, and it sounds like I'm picking, but I'm not picking, but it's kind of hard to come to city council meeting, especially for the residents where we have an agenda we have to prove, or we don't have minutes to look at what happened the last meeting. Is there any way we can look into an automated software program where they record and they transcribe the minutes? There's programs like that, that we can do that.
Yeah, it's very costly, but yeah, we can look into it.
Well, I mean, the minutes are really important. Like, do you want me to sit here tonight and vote an example on city council agenda items, where we worked on them in the work session? And do we have to sit now, explain to each resident, like each vote that we're going to take, what we discuss about? When we have minutes out there, we have minutes to back us up. That's what I'm trying, like I say.
Well, she was working her hardest on getting them, because she's doing more in detail with them.
But isn't it two people can write minutes?
No. No, only one.
Actually, they... Karen used to do them.
Karen... No, Karen does executive.
Only executive?
Only executive, and Sam did what... She replaced Lori, which Lori did all the minutes.
Okay.
And Karen only does executive, because Karen or Sam cannot listen to those.
Maybe we need to look at that software, so we can make everyone's life, you know, and we can have the minutes on time.
Well, I'll have IT look into on that.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the agenda. Our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items this evening, but aside from my comment on those minutes, I'll take any other questions.
Any questions of the city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our management consultant, Mr. Steve Golden. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, I want to apologize. I'm going to ask for this item to be removed from the agenda. Friday, it came to our knowledge that, is this a civil service position? We don't think it is, but we're trying to just make sure our labor attorney feels it's not a civil service position. He is on vacation. I was waiting all the way up until quarter to seven from our attorneys out of the Addison Law Firm, who are working as a replacement for John Kelly, Stephen Alffel, and Carl Addison. And they were focusing on another issue. Then we'll talk about executive session. They did not get a chance to get to the civil service question. So I ask for this to be pulled off, to make sure we give you the right information, to make sure that you're not approving something that's not real.
So to create a new position, it has to be civil service?
We don't know. We're looking for an opinion. We're looking for an opinion from the Addison Law Firm, from either John Kelly, Stephen Alffel, or Carl Addison. John Kelly is on vacation, so he could not give us an opinion. I was working with Carl Addison and Stephen Alffel Friday evening and today, and they were working on something for executive session tonight. They did not get a chance to give me an opinion on this particular issue, so I'm asking to pull it off because of that. I'm hoping it doesn't have to be civil service, but we want to make sure, you know, before I tell you...
I'm hoping too, because we don't want...
And actually, I'll take the blame for that. When Steve asked me to write up the resolution for approval tonight, I said, "Is this a civil service position? Since I'm not the civil service attorney, can you ask that question?" And then obviously, with Kelly being on vacation, it's just, we don't have the answer yet.
Are you looking for a motion to table it?
Please.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table the approval of the creation of a new position, a communications specialist, by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin. Question or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, just a few other things, just real quick. Had a meeting earlier this evening with Ron and Mike Stiff. Ron will be presenting a really good idea on the Wilcox issue, the storm store we talked about, the issue of one resident not signing off on something. So Ron's got a nice plan. That was the original plan, but I guess it was never communicated, so that'll be at the next workshop, so I think you guys will be pleased with the outcome of that plan. And also, we met with all the staff, almost every employee over the past week regarding the dress code policy. Received, it was very well received. Went over the expectations, customer service, went over perception and culture, and I think it went fairly well. So some recommendations I gave to the council via email, but overall, I think it was very received, and they understood why we're trying to do this and why we're trying to create this professional atmosphere conveyed to our residents and to our stakeholders. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions, Steve?
I just have a comment, when I wish you happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
On your 40th or 50th?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. Moving on, Public Works Department. Our Assistant Director of Public Works, Mr. Blaine Klein. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Three items for you tonight. The first item is part of the ongoing water source changeover. The city has to complete corrosion studies to determine the effects of the new water source on our internal infrastructure. This agreement is the first step in the process of sending that infrastructure to Cornwall Engineering, and it basically tests the city of Crest Hill water and the future Lake Michigan water. So this is, I'd be seeking your approval for the agreement with Strand Associates for not to exceed an amount of $81,300 for the corrosion control treatment demonstrative study.
So moved, just presented.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for an approval of an agreement with Strand Associates for the corrosion control treatment demonstrative study not to exceed an amount of $81,300. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Second item, the agreement for bidding-related services and construction-related services has a schedule change from December 30th of 2022 to April 21st of 2025. This is for the East Plant phosphorus improvements. We're finally seeing the end in sight, so most... There's two items hanging out there. The April 21st date of 2025 includes a year of warranty, so we're shooting for early spring of 2024 for final completion. So there's no cost associated with this. It's just a schedule change for the paperwork in the contract. So I'd be seeking council to approve East Sewage Treatment Plan Amendment Number 1 schedule change from December 30th, 2022 to April 21st, 2025.
So moved. Give me a second. We have a motion by Alderwoman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Boucher for the approval of the East Sewage Treatment Plan Phosphorus Improvements Amendments Number 1, schedule change from December 30, 2022 to April 21st, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
The final item tonight is the city has an agreement with Utility Service Company Inc. for annual water tower and tank maintenance. Scope of work number 1 begins the process of performing maintenance on the iron filters throughout the interior portion of the wells. Well 11 would be the iron filter covered under this scope of work agreement. To approve, I'm seeking council to approve the agreement with Utility Service Company Inc. for scope of work number 1 in the amount of $220,808.
So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve an agreement with Utility Service Company Incorporated, master services agreement, scope of work number 1 in the amount of $220,808. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Cepidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kewell.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher. Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
That is all I have tonight, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions of Public Works?
I just want to thank Blaine and Don and all of your staff for acting quickly on that street sign issue over in Fox Meadow. Just really want to, if you pass along to your staff.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Blaine. Moving on to our city engineer, Mr. Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda, but I can entertain any questions.
Questions of city engineer?
Can you give us an update on the construction on Weber... I'm sorry. Borio.
On Borio?
Yes.
Yes, over the weekend, Essex Court was actually, the final surface was placed. They should come out later this week. Got to finish the rest of Borio Drive, and then they'll go over and they'll finish Prairie. So that's where we are on that.
So will be done the end of this week?
The plan is to be done at the end of this week. That's what the contractors told me.
And they'll be placing the sign for the fresh oil?
Yes.
So I'll get another comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ron, how about the update on the work on Route 30, sewer lining? Is that almost complete?
The lining is about 50% complete. They're scheduled, they got another two to three weeks' worth of lining. We've started buttoning up some of the trenches, starting from six corners, heading back, we'll call it east. That's soundly scheduled to be completed sometime to the end of November.
Okay. Thank you.
It's moving along pretty fairly.
I also noticed on Weber Road, they started the sign. They started like the utility work on that sign.
Yep, they did the excavation work last week for the sign on Weber and on Broadway. I was told that later this week, they're going to pour the foundations, and then obviously, those will sit until the actual stones are delivered, which are still like a month away, and then they'll be installed. I think he's going to try to get some of landscaping in before that and then get the lighting drops from ComEd. So everything's moving along slowly, but it is moving along. And then today, just one last one at Theodore and Gaylord. Kind of a mess out there today, but they were putting down, doing a hot mix resurfacing out there. They did complete that today. They're going to start doing the traffic signal work later this week, and they're looking at the end of next week to do the surface on that, so.
I've been down Theodore Street today. Burning that road is a good idea. It's really smooth right now, but it's burned.
Yeah, that's the hot mix.
It's going to be a lot smoother when the finish coat comes on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it looks a lot better than it was, especially that edge along the curb line. It's a lot, a lot better.
How's the cost of hauling away, burning it?
It's significantly cheaper to do the hot mix in place, because, one, we don't have to pay for new material. We're just paying for new oil, and we don't have to pay to haul off the old stuff to bring in new stuff. So it's a significant savings to do that.
I was told by a guy that operated that piece of equipment that when that road gets paved the rest of the way, it'll be smooth as glass.
It will, yep.
We should do that more and more, some of the other roads than, too.
Yeah, that's what I've been doing on all of them since I've been here. It also provides an extra thickness to stop cracks from coming in. Usually, if you just do an inch and a half of your surface and walk away, you usually see the cracks within the next year. This will delay it up to three to five years, and then we can start with, you know, the standard treatments after that. So it's another barrier to help keep water out of the base, so.
I think that's the only company that's got that burner.
There's two.
Is there two companies?
Yep, yeah. And last year, we used a different company, but Gallagher is... They've done a lot of work. Yeah, they were the first ones to come out with it.
It's a hot job.
Yeah, it gets hot.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Yep.
Moving on to our committee development director, Mr. Ron Metzner. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, good evening. As a follow-up to last Monday's workshop meeting, the city attorney prepared the ordinance that's included in the agenda packet, backup information to document the approval of a variance that would allow a flag, new flag pole to be installed on the Reza Auto Repair property in a place that it wouldn't necessarily comply with the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. Instead of having a 35-foot setback, we'd have approximately...
Excuse me, Ron. Can you put the microphone on? Can I hear you very well? Thank you.
Thank you. It would have a 24-foot setback from the east property line, which is adjacent to a detention facility. Staff had viewed the ordinance in the agenda packet backup materials and has of the opinion that it's accurately reflecting what needs to be approved and is consistent with what was discussed at last Monday's workshop meeting, and therefore, we're recommending an approval of it.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Hang on, hang on. First of all, are there any questions to Ron Metzner in regards to this request?
that it's accurately reflecting what needs to be approved and is consistent with what was discussed at last Monday's workshop meeting, and therefore we're recommending an approval of it.
So moved as presented.
Second. Hang on, hang on. First of all, are there any questions to Ron Metzner in regards to this request? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Reza is in the audience. Mr. Reza, do you have any comments that you would like to make at the podium?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody just for bringing this process along as far as we've gotten it. I greatly appreciate the time and the resources that you guys have put into looking into everything, making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed so that it's done the right way. I've learned a lot, so I appreciate that, and thank you guys for everything.
Any questions of the applicants?
No, just thank you for your service to our country. I found out this last week, and thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Reza. All right, anyone in the audience would like to speak for or against the request of the variation of twenty-four feet on a setback at twenty-three eighty-six Jory Court, Reza's Auto Repair Shop? This is case number V dash twenty-three dash three dash nine dash one. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. Second request, anyone would like to speak for or against the case of V dash twenty-three dash nine dash, let me start that over, V dash twenty-three dash three dash nine dash one, the request of Reza's Auto Repair Shop at twenty-three eighty-six Jory Court. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. With all the business being concluded, a motion would be in order.
We have a motion by Alder Person Overland.
Seconded by...
Oh, second.
It's just a pity.
All right, we have a motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Sepiti for the findings and decisions of the plant commission as to the case V dash twenty-three dash three dash nine dash one, the application of Reza's Auto Repair for a setback variation of twenty-four feet at twenty-three eighty-six Jory Court. Questions or comments?
There's also the ordinance.
That's right, an ordinance, you are correct. An ordinance approving the variation to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property located at twenty-three eighty-six Jory Court in the city of Crest Hill. Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one-nine-six-one.
Okay, you're all set. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ron?
Yeah, I have a couple of other quick updates. Thought you might be, get questioned about an accident on Plainfield Road today. There was a car that was pushed into the new Excel Orthodontics Facility. They just recently finished up remodeling that property, and they had some people in the office. I don't necessarily believe that they had any customers in the office, but car got pushed through the front window of the facility. You saw the pictures, it got pushed right up to the front receptionist desk.
Yeah.
Very fortunate that nobody was seriously injured in that facility. There's some structural concerns with the facility, so it was posted not approved for occupancy, and the structural engineer is going to be out to inspect the facility before they'll be allowed to reoccupy that facility for business purposes. And then last Friday, the Community Development Department, Building Division, issued the grading permit for Midwest Industrial Fund's half million square foot plus warehouse facility on La Dice Parkway, so that project's moving forward now.
Okay, any questions of Community Development?
Well, that building just got reopened from the last car that went through the front of it. Now the car went through the side of it. I don't know about, if I'd want to, I don't know.
Okay, thanks, Ron, appreciate it. Moving on to our Police Department, our Police Chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have an agenda item this evening, but I'd like to inform City Council, we're looking at Halloween trick-or-treat hours for this year. One thing we took into consideration last year, we did four to seven. This year I was proposing to do three to seven, and one reason is that Richland is off that day, and Chaney Manji is out at two forty that day, so...
Chaney Manji is what?
Is out of school at two forty that day. So we thought maybe lower it down to three, just to get a little more daylight hours, unless City Council has another idea.
I think that's a great idea.
So do I.
Can we make sure it's posted? Because residents already they're asking on social media when it's...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Yeah, Chief, on Raynor Avenue, been getting residents complaining about a lot of truck traffic on there, and the signs ain't that big. I don't know if we need to make the signs larger there, showing no trucks, or what we need to do, if we can get some squads along that road to try to deter the trucks going down there, because, you know, they're big rigs and they don't belong there.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've run details there in the past, but I will, I'll definitely take a look at the signs and see if there's something more we can do. Maybe Blaine and I can take a look.
All right, thank you. Okay, thanks, Ed. Moving on to the Mayor's Report, I received an email Friday from Superintendent Andy Siegfried from Chaney Manji School, asking for the, requesting the road closures for the parade, which will be on Tuesday, October thirty-first at one P M. He's also asking for assistance from the Police Department, the Public Works, for the safety of the children walking through the neighborhood and the streets. The parade usually takes about thirty minutes from start to finish. We have been doing this as a city for many, many years, so I would ask for a motion for... So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche, for the approval of the assistance of the police and Public Works with the barricades and everything else for the Chaney Manji Halloween Parade road closures on Tuesday, October thirty-first, from one P M to two P M. Questions or comments?
Mayor, can you just thank Andy and Jackie for continuing this tradition? I know the kids really look forward to this parade, so.
They do, and I know it's probably twenty-five plus years that they've been doing this, so it goes back a long ways. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, just a couple items, that's it for the agenda items. I attended last Wednesday a grand opening for Bridges to a New Day, which is located at sixteen-one-five-one Weber Road in the lower level of that building. They are a counseling agency that you work through with your insurance company. They are highly involved in family counseling, behavioral counseling, counseling, mental health issues. They also do domestic violence for anybody that needs assistance. So please, they've been around for a long, long time. They recently moved from Romeo Ville to the city of Crest Hill, so if you're in need of those services, please use them, use those services for any help that you may need. And then also last week, myself and Nate Albert were at the Crest Hill Police Department Golf Outing that they've had for many years also. It was at Prairie Bluff Golf Course this year. There was very little rain, so we got lucky, but it was a beautiful day, and Prairie Bluff, along with the American Italian Cultural Club, did a fantastic job with the golf outing and with the food after the, after the golf. So congratulations to Mike Brown, I know he was in charge of the, Officer Mike Brown from the Police Department. He did a fantastic job with putting everything together, and I'm sure they raised a lot of money for charities that they're going to give money to. With that, I have no other items. If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them. All right, moving on to our City Clerk, Christine Verche Hall. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, thank you so much. I have nothing to report tonight.
Any questions of City Clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Our City Treasurer, Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to have Lisa kick this one off on our annual tax levy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight the city will be asking for approval for the annual tax levy as presented at the September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three City Council Work Session. As Alder Woman Gazal did state, the minutes are not in the packet, so I'm going to give a brief summary of what was discussed at the work session, and at the end I'm going to open it up for anybody who has any questions.
Can you move the mic? For some reason you can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you.
Thank you. Sure, okay. So as I stated last work session, two thousand twenty-three is a quad annual year for Will County, and just to explain that, I probably said that wrong, so I apologize, but this means that by Illinois State Statute, every parcel in Will County will receive a revised assessment notice regardless of the value of the property is changed or not. So it'll show the prior year's assessment, the township assessment, and then Will County will provide a final tax assessment after any multipliers are applied. This assessment is based on three years of adjusted valid sales of homes. Two thousand twenty-three values are based on adjusted sales from two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty. So I did want to mention that because people are probably taking a look at their tax bill from the previous year and noticing an increase. Just wanted to let them know that that was something that's done every so often by Will County, so it doesn't have anything that's specific to the city of Crest Hill. Also, I had discussed at the last work session that the city is in compliance with the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, that is PTAL, which means that since the city is a non-home rule community, it is entitled to levy the lesser of five percent or CPI over the previous year's extension. CPI as of December twenty-two was six point five percent, which means that the city can level, levy just under five percent of what it received for last year, and that is what we did, and that is what was presented. So there is no need for a truth in taxation hearing. The city would be required to have a hearing with the public, and there's a certain number of days that it has to publish this notice and then have a hearing with the public if it intends to levy over either CPI or five percent, and the city did not do that this year. So I do, in the, and everybody's packet and was published online is the booklet that I had gone over with everybody at the twenty-fifth work session of September. Page four actually has the amount of money that the city is actually levying for. So the total amount that we are requesting is two million five hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So again, that is just under five percent of last year, and fifty percent of that is going to go to the general fund. The other fifty percent goes straight to the police pension, so it doesn't even count to the city's books. Is there else I have down here to point out? Also, I think that it's important on page seven of this text, of this booklet, and I'm not going to go over specifically, but I think it's important for a taxpayer to take a look at their individual tax bill, because I, I don't know unless anybody is, you know, financially, isn't, I'm going to even say, I like to look at numbers, so I look at my tax bill, but if anybody were to have a look at the tax bill, they would see exactly where their money is going to. And if you happen to look at your tax bill, you'd notice that the schools actually are receiving sixty percent of a property taxes, a property owner's taxes goes to the school, and the city only receives six point four or five percent of somebody's property taxes. I think that's important to point out. I just wanted to go over that again. And then just for the public's interest, the amount, the two point five million dollars that the city receives from its property taxes makes up fifteen percent of the total general fund revenue that it receives. The majority of the money that the city receives in its general fund to base its operations on comes from sales tax revenue and also shared other state income tax revenue that it receives from the state. So that's basically a quick synopsis of what was discussed at the last work session. There are a number of ordinances that we are going to go to. It's important to point out that we do have two general obligation bonds that the city pays every year, and that if the city's not able to make those principal and interest payments, those are then pushed back to the taxpayers. We are not doing that this year. We are abating the principal and interest payments, and there is an ordinance to go through to do that, so the city is going to pay the principal and interest payments as it has done ever since it took on these general obligation bonds. We will do that again to obey the ordinance, so when we file the levy, that'll also be filed with the county. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Any questions of Lisa?
Okay. Otherwise, we can go through, and Ray, do you want me to read the individual ones, or would you like to read them, or how do you want to go through this?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first one would be, the city would be looking for the approval of an ordinance for the levy and the assessment of the taxes for fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty-four, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the approval of an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May one, two thousand twenty-four, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five for the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one-nine-six-two.
Okay. The next ordinance that the city will be looking for approval on is an ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal and interest on general obligation bonds, sales tax alternative revenue source, series twenty-one, two thousand nineteen B, of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois.
So moved as presented.
Second. Motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, to prove an ordinance abating the tax levied for the year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal of and interest on general obligation refunding bond, waterworks, and sewer system alternate revenue source, series two thousand twenty nineteen A of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance one-nine-six-three.
Okay, I think you just approved two thousand nineteen A.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll read the one for two thousand nineteen B. That would be the ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal and interest on general obligation bonds, sales tax alternative revenue source, series two thousand nineteen B, of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alder Woman Gazal, for approval and ordinance abating tax levy for year two thousand twenty-three to pay the principal and interest on general obligation bonds, sales tax, alternate revenue source, series two thousand nineteen B, of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Overland.
Yes.
Mark Sepiti.
Thank you very much.
And so the other, there's four other items here, and those are just items that the mayor will need to sign, the mayor and the clerk need to sign off on, and that's just to certify the levy, so that doesn't need a formal vote. So I appreciate everybody's help and everybody's work, and I appreciate the treasurer's help and always his support, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you.
Thanks Lisa. Next I have, I seek approval on our list of bills through October third, two thousand twenty-three, that totals two million one hundred and forty-eight dollars, or excuse me, two million one hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and five cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all, last item I have is just informational, would like to report regular overtime payroll from September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three through the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And I'll take any questions if you have one.
Questions of the treasurer? All right, thanks Glenn.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda, anyone? New business? Many liaison reports, anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anybody like to go first? We'll begin with Alderwoman Gazal.
Just a reminder that this is most is the breast cancer awareness. As I've said before, I lost my mom for breast cancer, so you are in a country where you have many opportunities, share as much post, continue on sharing awareness, and don't forget to check your, your breast. Thank you Mayor.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Verchay?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Dyke?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Kubal?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, just a reminder, it's a little early, but we talked about Halloween, so I can talk about the Lions Club Halloween roast, even though we just gave ourselves another hour of work. But there'll be the three locations again this year, at Richland Center, Chaney Manji School, and Renaissance Park?
Remington.
Remington Park, yes, thank you.
On Boreo.
On Boreo. Thanks Claudia, that's it.
Alderman Zepidi?
Nothing tonight.
Alderperson Oberlin?
Nothing tonight.
Public comment? Anyone like to address city council, please step to the podium, please state your name for the record, your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Our city attorney, Mike Steph, Mike, is there a need for an executive session?
Uh, yes, there is, under five I L C S one-twenty-two C one.
Motion would be in.
So moved, just presented, second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an executive session for two C one. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Dorell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at seven forty-nine P M.